If you would please scan for the indication then we'll... Heavenly Father, we thank you for everyone who's here and we ask you to bless everyone who's here. Bless us all, oh Lord, in this meeting where there could be, there will be things that are contentious and we ask you to grant us your discernment and your wisdom so that we can discuss these things calmly and work things out and learn bit by bit, month by month, how to govern ourselves. Lord, we thank you for all that you do for us in Christ's precious name we pray.
Amen.
Would you bring us to the American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to you, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. Now, did you receive any citizens' communications?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think there may be some people who do want to speak tonight during the public hearings and so we're going to move right on to item number five, which is the first item on the public hearings. And that is to conduct a public hearing regarding the city of Van Alstine's intent to modify utility rates effective September 15th, 2016. And what the, I'll tell you what the council has discussed, what we're looking at. We're looking at a 3% across-the-board increase for water use. That's water and sewer, 3% across the board. Does anyone have any discussion, any questions?
I was having to bear with the local communities.
Well, let's see, well, we have that. I didn't, okay.
As large as I can get it.
Do you want it? Oh, okay. Well, Frank, do you want to get us through that point out there?
Well, if anybody's got any concern about it, what you want to look at is your total utility bill, which is down here at the bottom. Water's gone down this year, wastewater's gone up. That's the emphasis this year is wastewater. Projects out of the plant, staying in compliance, working with engineering and Public Works. We got down, we got outside of a violation fine, which was going to be right around $56,000. We need to keep working on sewer and that's the emphasis. So, as far as the total 3% increase, water's gone down, however wastewater's gone up. And so, I understand people that are concerned about paying for wastewater, but the main concern is getting our sewer plant in better shape. It's more productive, it keeps us in compliance, as well as we've got two projects. One's to extend a water line up Dallas Street. And so, we'll do our internal loop over time without going out for bonds or going out for big loans. And then we also got a sewer improvement where we're trying to get our main trunk that goes through the old part of town, starting on Kelly Lane and going back to the east through Drainage Jeezment and then up Dallas where once we get to Shreveport then we'll start moving over. So, the next three to four years, we anticipate having our trunk sewer, our main trunk sewer underneath the train tracks going out towards the sewer plant. So, that's where the increase is. Our main competitors, whether you believe it or not, are Analis and Howe. They have similar debt to us and so your total utility bill is where you want to look at us being competitive. And so, Anna, having the largest consumer base is typically where we're trying to get underneath. So, we're trying to weigh citizens' comfort level, council's comfort level with us being able to get projects done and us being prepared and in better shape with our infrastructure moving into the future. Because if we keep kicking the can down the road, it doesn't do anybody any good. I'd love to tell you it'd be nice and easy for us to just keep pushing it off. It'd be easier for me as far as my stress level, but honest to goodness, we need to get things accomplished and we need to keep moving forward and that's what I believe we're doing with this utility rate. So, you're welcome to comment. Thank America.
I want to say, everybody knows water bills are high. We're all paying high water bills. The water is expensive. It's expensive to get it here. We don't have our own reservoirs. We have wells, we have five working wells, but they're no longer able to keep up. I think we're right on the verge right now of having, of not being able to supply all the water we need during the summer. And so, we're having to go elsewhere for water and we're going to have to go to reservoirs like a large part of Texas. Thank God, people started building these reservoirs that we can take water from because the water table is going to drop from pumping these wells down. And we're going to continue to use our wells, but later, I thought it might be this month, it's probably going to be next month, that we are going to start taking water from the south. What do you want to call that? Dallas water, GTUA water?
It's, we call it CGM. It's the Collins Basin Municipal Alliance Water, which is out of the northern Texas system.
And it's the cities, pretty much, that Frank just showed you. That's the alliance.
And we'll get into the water line once we talk about the change order, which is number 10.
Oh, all right, okay. But I just wanted to say, water is expensive and our infrastructure went for a long time, it went for decades without much update. The community wasn't growing, you know, not default prior councils, but the community wasn't growing. There just wasn't a lot of money and so they just made do with the infrastructure that they had, the water lines, the sewer line, but now they're in bad shape. And so, not only do we have to buy the water, but we have to update that infrastructure. The sewer plant right now is, needs more emphasis, I think, than our water line. We've done some work on our water line, not all of it, but we've done some of it. And the sewer needs, needs the work now, our water treatment plant, I think especially. And so, I know there are questions out there. I saw a hand over here earlier. Yes, ma'am.
The 3% just came up this month.
What's that?
The 3%, you said that the increase isn't just coming up this month?
Well, we've been talking about it. Now, we have to have these public hearings before the council takes a vote on it.
Some institute a 3%.
Correct.
So, it's going to keep going up. Our bill this month is over double of what last month. We use the exact same water time, you know, and we're not home all day. There's just the two of us. Why would it double like that? Like, it's over doubled. That makes no sense because I don't think they can read our meters properly.
But we also had the same problem.
Let me address, let's, rather than have a...
We're together.
Well, okay.
Because they couldn't read the...
Our meters.
Our meters. And that's because there was a flashlight coming from my other side and that was coming in the same box as I'm in.
And we called this heat and they never came.
And yes, but after that, I talked to them when they went to check my meter and I told them, I said, "Can you find out why this is doubling?" And mine, hers was triple next door. And then she went to 89 and I went to $235.
Well, that's kind of the way my water bill looks.
Well, it doesn't, but you can't...
I apologize.
We're not going anywhere.
We need to, because we're a public hearing, so the city secretary can write down the names and addresses of folks wanting to begin that process.
Thank you. And what was your name, ma'am?
My name is Odette Hertabees. We're on Bryn Mawr and it would be nice if they could come and check this meter. The box is sink into the, it should be leavening and where they put it, it shouldn't be where there's a groove between the two land where if a sprinkler or rain and the box overflows into the road. You can't see the meter at all. And we have complained about it and nobody's done.
Now, we also have a problem, they're building the house. They're just finishing building the house. Well, we got water coming from there in our yard all the time and then it flows down into the same sewer. Okay? Why do I have to pay for this?
Well, primarily you're paying for what goes through your meter now. And I, they do read those meters. I don't know when they recharge them.
We can't see the meter when there's full of water. We cannot even see the meter.
Okay, we'll take your complaint on board. I don't want to argue about it. Are there other comments? Just ma'am.
Suzanne Crowe, 160 East Peristree. I guess I do blame prior councils. It is their fault and I think you're going to continue the problem because what I'm concerned with is, I understand everything you say, what our problems are. I agree and we're doing a great job and I appreciate the communications you give about it. But the problem is, is I don't hear anything about planning and preparing this. We shouldn't have to have these arguments. We should understand what's going on and what the cost is and is the increase we're paying for? Because I was of the impression, my water went up significantly last time we did this because it was going towards fixing these problems. I'm hearing, we're not even touching, we're not coming close. That means we're not giving Frank enough money to operate or something's going on wrong. It's planning. So, it was prior city councils and I'm hearing the same things because I've been here 24 years, same problems. I'm not hearing communication from this group. Here's what the plan looks like. So, we're prepared when you go, "Okay, we need to go up because something's going on." I'm not, I'm not hearing plans. I'm hearing we're bursting pipe and which is great, it's, you know, moving along. But I don't feel like you're communicating well enough to us about, we plan for these things. We know the wastewater treatment is terrible and it needs to be repaired. But I don't feel like I'm getting any communication from this group about, "Okay, we raised it and it was to do to this level of repair and then hence this was our next phase." And we told you about the next phase several years ago. So, I, you know, I do blame the prior councils. They didn't plan it. You know, everybody knew it was a problem. I don't have a problem paying for it, but I have a problem when I feel like it's a little willy-nilly and it survives. So, that I would like to see a little bit more communication about what's, you know, and I get it from the paper and I get it from your letter, so I appreciate it.
I'd be on the council office of anybody, which is why he probably moved. Originally, they, what we do is what I call water, it's like a survey type thing. If you hire a company to come in, they determine how much water you have, what you need to have fixed, what, how much that will cost, what your rates have to be to make that match up and how much increase they should be this year. For when I was on the council five years ago, six years ago, we would have one of those surveys done and then the council would look at it and say, "My neighbor don't want their water breaks going up. We can't do that. We just can't do that. We'll have to just live without those fixes." And so, each year it was the same thing, just live without those fixes. Then newer councils came along and then decided they really wanted to bite the bullet and try to fix things. And so, we have started a process to where now we, we have programs that are maintained by engineering that tell us how much, based on how many houses, like this year, writing on 100 houses that we're expecting to come online in the course of the next year. We probably really expect 120, but if we do 120, we're taking a chance that maybe the economy dies a little bit, it doesn't go as good, so we want to be safe with what we're doing. We want to try to make sure that we have the money there to do the projects that need to be done. Before we can fix, most people want to have the streets fixed up as their number one priority.
You won't hear that.
Well, okay, but that'll be their number one priority, but most people don't realize that most of our infrastructure goes underneath those streets. So, we have to fix the infrastructure first before we can fix the streets better.
Oh, I think everybody knows that.
And so, it goes in a cycle.
Yeah.
And so, we are trying to follow those, the plans that have been made and the biggest thing is the sewage disposal plant. It takes a lot to keep it going and we're, and we're working hard at that and we're in compliance now and we're trying to make it work right. And then the other thing is that people don't realize is that we used to, when you, when you, when I go to a water well and you drill down, the only thing you paid for to get the water out of the ground was the workers to pump it. Now, we're paying the states to get it out of the ground because they decided that that was a good resource and the way to keep us from using it is to charge us for it. So, right now they're charging cities for using the water, now the wells. They're going to start charging the individual representatives, I mean, people that live out in the country that have their own well, they're going to have to start paying for their water and their own wells they put out there in the ground.
That could be due to the person who owns the mail, right?
Wait, okay, we're...
He's billing.
It's a part of what we're paying, yes.
How much of the new builds held out?
I know your name, but she has to...
Tiffany Clum, 203 East Empress, or whatever, 230. It's different by a verbity. How much of the new builds does that give to fix that? You know, when the, when the new builders come in and they want to build a house, what percentage of that goes back to us so that we can go towards that? Do we need to raise that? Do we need to look at that, maybe?
Well, the question is, right, is when you have, when you have new builders come in, are you charging them to start building and help replace some of this old infrastructure?
Do we need to raise that rate?
Yes, we do. We charge them, we charge them a fee upfront to pay to, and, you know...
And they're in charge, and they're in charge of putting all the infrastructure in their development, correct?
Right, right.
But we also need something to help with our older infrastructure to help support that because if they keep building, whether they do their part or not, we can't keep up with that.
The theory is that you're collecting that money off the new neighborhoods that will help you fix the old neighborhoods because you don't need to fix the new neighborhoods.
Well, it needs some work in reality, not just in theory.
Well, that does work in reality.
It's not working.
It would be the reaction.
But it's not working.
Well, if you look at other cities' bills, it is working. It's, it's still better than what they're doing and we're trying, so...
They're doing this and they're going backwards.
And I think we're, I think we're hoping that with the new construction that these rates can, well, of course we have to, you know, keep building and keep public hearing out and infrastructure, but we're hoping that the rates will kind of flatten out a little too as, as we do better because the city is going to start going...
Don't you worry that if you raise the rates that people will conserve and then you're just fighting a losing battle at that point?
Well, that's a possibility. I don't know if the rates, but...
That's a huge reality.
Well, the rates have gone up and, but there's not a lot of conservation, I think, not enough.
But there will be if you have astronomical water bills, which is going to be counterproductive for you as a city wherein if you tax or if you charge the builders for that, that's free money, basically, easy money.
Well, as I said, we're hoping that the rates will start flattening out with increased construction, you know, people here. And to answer a question, I think, I'm not sure we addressed yours because what you wanted was more communication...
Yeah, mine wasn't a question. It was a comment that I would say, you know, we're doing great. You're giving us great information on what's going on, you know, for the past, you know, two months and what's going forward maybe in the next month or so. I'm just saying, and my suggestion.
Aye.
Give us a little bit more about what the plan is and remind us that you have a plan because, you know, we don't always remember.
I, I...
And we just hear it's going up, it's going up.
The more communication, the better. And like your right board and me, Rodney, very lean with letting me have space in the paper and I do write that weekly letter. But the more I can communicate and better I can focus on what you know and you know, better off everyone here. But, and back to your, you again, Tiffany, we are hoping that the water rates can, the escalation can slow down, but water is just going to be expensive, I'm afraid. And the infrastructure repairs, well, we can fix all the old infrastructure. Hopefully, we can get all that done someday, but we also have to build the new, like this water that we've extended out here so that people can start building on the west side of 75.
The last time we discussed the water, we did all the meetings and stuff. My husband and I were there and they discussed a bond, that that was an option. Is that still an option or is that, whatever happened to that idea?
We did sell a bond. How much was the bond for the water?
You're talking about the Texas Water Development Board loans?
Yes.
They were loans.
Those were loans, Texas Water Development Board, and that was for the water line expansion to make a loop where we're off the branch system and going through town. And then we did the sewer, sewer line pipe burst and to handle that capacity from 75 Georgetown and Industrial Park. So, that's why we're working on the old part of town this year and trying to take the trunk line through town. So, I mean, we're competitive on rates. I mean, you know, we can lower them. It's not going to make a whole lot of sense. And we're trying to stay right underneath the other cities to where we're attractive for business. We have competitive rates. I mean, we're trying to get things done. I mean, we had the hearings three years ago when we established the rate, the rate design and we're working off that same design we've been working off for years. We anticipated 80 homes, which brings in the impact fees and the tap fees, which is that money to offset it, but if we increase them too much, I mean, we remain competitive in that arena too and that's something that council considered over several meetings. But the main thing is, you know, if we raise them too high, we're not going to get that development. So, we're finding that balance and that balance is 3% this year, sir.
Well, I thought that was a bond. You look like a bond, but it's a loan.
You're paying your payment. You're carrying that note, so I mean, that debt is a part of the city, so I mean, that's an issue.
Right.
Listen, I don't, Darren Clum, 230 East Empress. I would say that, you know, I mean, I looked at this thing and to me, as long as we're competitive in the neighborhood, you know, the trouble with Van Alstine right now is you got one income stream really and that's that water bill. And so, I mean, if these guys are going to do much to help them, you know, until you start getting a little bit more building going on, you know, the only way to pay for infrastructure repairs is to manage that water bill. I do think the conservation is more stupid. I think dragging the tap out two years longer than it should have been done is probably a little stupid. But, you know, I think that, you know, conservation is, it's nice in theory. The truth is, you know what, you got to have, you got to have those water bills coming in because that's the only thing that pays for the city to operate. And when those things go away, you know, preaching conservation is a nice green idea, but in truth, it's, it's the only way you're getting money to come into the city. And, you know, really, conservation was driven more because our wells are outpaced when we had taps sitting there that should have been taken care of. And then the dragging and see putting those taps in is kind of not very profitable, in my opinion. But like I said, I don't know all the details. Maybe there was some other issues in getting that done, I don't know. But it's been three, four years since that was discussed. You know, they're still not, the taps still aren't tied in. It's 300 foot high, come on. My dog can dig that by then. I got a little dog, you know, I mean, it's...
Regarding conservation, actually it was a bigger issue when we were trying to operate off of our wells. But now they have T CMA water coming up here.
We've always had that. I mean, we've had that water available for...
How long?
Oh, years.
It's actually been available for the last two years since Anna tapped on. We couldn't take before Anna because there was a slug of water that was in between Melissa and Anna and ourselves that actually needed to be treated and flushed. And so, now that we, could they have, could the city ability...
So, we let somebody else flush that? Is that what we did?
We're going to have to. And so, that's one of the things that's going to have to happen. When we get to number 10, sir, on the change order, that's talking about that Dixon basin. So, we can open up the tap, but it's contaminated water until we flush it out. And so, that's, that's the main thing is talking to y'all about that when we get to that moment.
Do we have a target date for that?
A target date for hooking on?
Yeah, for turning the water on from the bottom.
I mean, we've, you know, we've talked about a month for the last two or three weeks. Honestly, Mr. Curly, it's when the contractor gets out here and contractors are in high demand. So, hopefully, as soon as we, as soon as I talk to council about it and they approve it and the contractor can get out here and they can get the work done, then we can turn the tap on and it'll continue to be safe drinkable water. It will be a little bit different because it'll be surface water, but we'll be mixing it into the system.
Will that be blended or...
Yes, sir, it'll be a blended water. So, the closer you are to well, the better off you're going to be as far as if you enjoy the well water that you're drinking right now. The closer you are to well number six where the CGMA line water is going to be coming in, the closer you're going to be to getting that surface water and so...
And the survey unit's going to have a different taste, guys, I've known it around.
That's, that's true, but we need, we need that capacity. We're at peak demand.
The gentleman here said that the state was going to start taxing the city for pumping the water out of the well. Is that right?
They've established conservation districts that charge well, well, people will take out wells, municipalities take out wells. I have no information on that, what the mayor's talking about, but it's, it's been stated.
Has the city attorney looked at that? I mean, he talks about kicking the can down.
We could get into a lawsuit with the state, but I can guarantee you we would lose. So, we're going to pay the conservation district seven cents per thousand. And so, and we've been paying for years and years before I started doing this.
It's just not really all that new. It's not...
Yeah, it's, it's just a couple of thousand dollars and you go on down the road. And I know a couple of thousand dollars adds up over the, over a $6 million budget. Of course, half of that is a utility fund, but honest to goodness, guys, we're not going to try and fight the state unless we can team up with other cities to get it accomplished. And that's what T M L is for.
Does anyone else have any questions? Who, who is your name again, sir? I'm sorry?
Yvonne. Yvonne Hertabees. Good French, Canadian, American. Who installs the water meters?
The city does.
See, it does?
On new development.
And do I have a contractor?
On new development, a contractor.
Contractor installs on new development and on other meters, other works, maintenance.
That type of meter is about 15 years old.
But we have new, we do have newer meters. They're digital meters and they're...
No, I don't want to have my place because I need it. Thank you.
Dan Zick, 218 Houston. I have two questions. One is, is the water and sewer sustainable? In other words, does the revenue coming in cover the cost? And then the second question is, is the increase to cover expenses, the gap there or is it to cover like capital outlays going forward?
It's primarily capital outlays. Sewer plant improvements as well as a water line extension up Dallas Street and a sewer line extension from Kelly coming over to Dallas and then going north toward Shreveport.
But right now, the system financially is sustainable. It just, we're not fixing very much.
We're not going after big bonds. So, where Mr. Clum's talking about indebtedness, we're at, in my estimation, what I'm willing to recommend to council, we're at, where I'm comfortable as far as us being in indebtedness. So, what we're trying to do right now is based upon development and new development helping to pay or our larger customer bases, we add homes, is helping to offset these, these issues. And so, we're going piece by piece, what we can afford to upgrade our system in older parts of town. Because, does it all need to be replaced? Yes. Do we have, do we have the maps, current maps to be able to do that? Now, because when, when our current engineering firm came in, the maps that we had were from 2003. They had not been updated. The engineering firm Freeman Milliken denied having any, any work being done in Van Alstine even though we've got minutes from back in the 90s and early 2000s. So, we don't have consistent mapping from three, before three to four years when, when our current engineering firm came on board. Do we find things from time to time? Because we didn't have consistent maps for almost 10 years? Yes, sir. And I'll, I'll talk about one of those things during the city management report about something that was found out at the Blenheim site.
So, so the answer probably long-term is going to be a bond issue that covers replacement of the entire system. Is that reasonable?
We would need to have a much healthier base before I bring that to council and before they try and bring that to y'all. So, honestly, Public Works is going to be running around chasing their tail on repairs and we're going to piece by piece, get this town in better shape.
You're going to try to do about bonds until the growth catches up?
That's exactly what I'm going to try and do, sir. The main, the emphasis is on the trying. So, it's, it's, are we gambling? Are we, are we playing a game here? Yes, sir, we are because we've got lines that the guys find that, that are shown to be poly or steel that...
Or sandcon.
Are...
Clay.
Clay. And so, it's, you know, there's, there's interesting things found. I say interesting, there's frustrating things that are found all the time. And so, it's, it's a balance.
But your bond issue is going to be a risky thing too, so you've got to weigh that against.
Right.
It would, but I mean, the main thing is, is the citizens believing in what we're trying to get accomplished. And so, I'm not talking about every little thing and I know the majority, well, not the majority. I know that there are a lot of people here that aren't, aren't very happy with some of the, some of the things that we're trying to work on because they're not completely understanding what's going on. But honest to God, we're working with a very lean staff. We're working with a great group of volunteers as council and we're trying to do our best to get it all taken care of. And so, you know, patience is always good, but I understand frustration whenever it directly affects you and I understand that on utility bills. So, I'm not, I'm not trying to minimize or anything, I'm just trying to give you the skinny of what we've been trying to get accomplished.
Any more questions or comments on this item? Okay, we'll move on to item number six. Conduct a public hearing regarding a request by the owner agent of the property being described as South Side Division Block Part 13, 106.7 by 51.5 by 106... 5 by 106 dot 7 by 53, and South Side Edition Block 13, less 106 dot 7 times by 53, more commonly known as 206, 206 East Houston Lane and 722 South Main Drive, to change the current zoning of single-family residential district, or SF1 in parentheses, to single-family residential district zero-line lot homes, or SF dash Z in parentheses. Now, I'll call on Mr. Vic, or Mr. Shreve, whoever wants, or Mr. Sheev, whoever wishes to speak first. What's your plan? And you're, you're welcome to come up here if it's better, or...
I have some... I've had drawings here for a couple of years, passed on now.
In these drawings, we've got a lot, and we have some ideas of homes. Each lot is unique in size, so that just means the building in below, which is there inside the lot, cheap as well, is being unique. So they're not a pretty gutter kind of a deal, per se. Each home, anybody else?
Make sure the council...
Each home will be two bath, three bedroom. It's in my best interest, and your best interest, for me to build a quality structure within the confines of...
Thank you.
Of the zoning requirements.
Do you have your copies, Brad? Do you have the copies?
The, under SF1, the required lot area to build is 7,500 square feet. As you can see on the first page, these lots are smaller than that. Under FSZ, the requirement is 4,000 square feet, okay? And within that, you're not to build over 50, 55% of the space.
I have a question first, where's FSZ?
It's not in the ordinances on...
You couldn't dig that up, I'd like to see that somewhere.
Somebody have something?
How's, where does that exist, Frank? Is it in the appendix online on the zoning orders?
It's in the appendix.
Well, it's, it's got a classification, but there's a table that shows that it's in there.
I looked at the table.
Yeah, we looked at the table, it's not listed on the table.
You can find it, SFZ, except in the residential use table.
And how does this get through planning and zoning when there really weren't proper notices put out on this? I mean, I got, I got mine, I got my notice the day of planning the...
The day before.
Oh, sorry, the day before.
And there's nothing in the paper published at all.
And I mean, I travel a little bit, but, you guys, that's not right.
I went back to June 17th, and there's no notification.
Something I need to do is, actually, this gentleman here had the...
Yeah, well, man, he's, he's...
And I need to, we need to let him continue until he, until he's ready to question, so that's...
It's in my best interest to put up an appealing structure, full appliances, that if we, many of the adjacent homes cross the street and saw under the 900 square foot range, the yellow one on theirs is 900 square feet. These homes will be 1,400 square feet, that's requirement of zoning, 1,400 or better. Be, like I said, two bedroom, three bath. Because I have a financial interest in the whole thing, I'm very discerning about who I let in, it's in my best interest to have responsible individuals in the structures, people that if there's an issue, they will call, and then I can deal with the issue. Or if it's something that they can maintain on their own, they can do that.
Are you renting them?
Excuse me?
Are you going to rent them out?
Yes, that's the idea. Yes. Yeah, so, and that's why I said it's in my best interest to have responsible individuals rent them.
You're making, you're making a zero lot line rental property.
Is there any questions, or do you want, do you have a longer presentation, more presentation? We're really out of order here, he has the floor.
The lot sizes were dictated when the original homes were built back in the 40s, okay? We don't have any control over that. That's the lot size that was dictated. So since then, things have progressed in the development of the town. With the current zoning, the lots are unbuildable, so they will sit there empty and vacant. And they can be made usable, doable in a responsible manner, you know, be well maintained, have a quality structure, that will enhance the community. Okay, now, your question was zero lot line?
I want to say something about, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting you. I want to say something about the notices. The notices were sent out, and I don't know why people didn't, didn't get them timely, but it's evident that several, several people didn't get the notices, and people that might have shown up at planning and zoning didn't come. So that, that's regrettable, I don't know what happened there. I wanna, I'll recognize, let's see, I think this gentleman had, had the first question.
I didn't see him get one at all.
Okay, you never got it.
I don't know what happened. And I had one question on this setback.
Yes.
What is the purpose of the setback?
The purpose of the setback?
Yeah, I mean, you're cutting the setback here down to almost nothing.
Well, that's under the zoning regulation following the code.
It's under FSZ, which nobody can find. If they really went to garden homes, they couldn't do that, right? So it's a weird...
So they're trying to change the zoning so that they can do a garden home instead of...
Yeah, I think you need to...
Hold on, I'll tell you what, the questions about zoning, if the gentleman...
Pull up FSZ, so we can see.
If you can't pull it up, we gotta go back to planning and zoning, just saying.
Well, and Larry, the other part about notice, forget even the 200 feet, I'm not even gonna debate whether people were noticed at the 200 feet, because that just means the people that are, like, directly across. There was nothing in any paper, there was no published to anybody else, so we were never allowed, as citizens of this, you know, to the neighborhood, citizens, the public was not actually given the opportunity to even address it, we didn't know about it.
And there wasn't even a sign put out on the property like there is...
No signs, no notices.
Well, there, there should have been notice. Now, the notice gets put up on, on the bulletin board, and it's also...
Doesn't matter, you're required to publish in the city's paper, and it never was published in the city's paper. And I can't believe you're telling us, the citizens, we want to know what's going on and have a voice, that we have to go down and look at the agenda on the front...
We have to provide online also.
No, no, you, this was never published until Friday afternoon about this one. And then P and Z is, like, so behind online, it's like, I can't even go...
April, we haven't pulled the planning and zoning minutes, except from April.
And I'm giving you factuals, please disprove me, but the point is, is there was no publication put in the paper.
And no publication, Larry, I can find where the paper said there was already a hundred deal.
There was nothing in the paper, I went down today to the Van Alstine leader, and the lady was very nice, and we went all the way back to June 17th. There was nothing in the paper.
What is required for notice?
Patricia.
We publish on the bulletin board, we publish notice in the...
In the newspaper. And notices are sent out to folks that live within 200 feet of the subject property. So if you're with, outside of the 200 feet, then you wouldn't get a personal notice via mail.
I got a personal notice the day before the meeting, that's not enough notice.
It is in the paper and online, is what we have to tell you. It says right here in section 46 dash 109, that you will give 15 days notice publication in the official newspaper, at least 15 days prior to such meeting. It never happened. So I don't even know why we're here, having this discussion, it was never published. And I also have your suggested guidelines for someone who, I do not know the people who are doing this at all, but you put out as the city suggestions for people on how to handle all this stuff. And it says on there that it would be wise if you were a caring person to place a sign on the property advertising the requested zoning change. So to me, I, you know, I really feel like there's lots of intentions being mentioned, but, you know, I'm not seeing any, I'm not the recipient of any good intention about good neighborhood, about the city doing their part. I'm not seeing any of that, I'm being deprived of my opportunity to say something about it, and you're telling me I should have done it at P and Z? I would have been happy to, didn't know about it. I found out last week about it. And I spent hours going online looking through the ordinances, I can't find SFZ anywhere. I found it in a uses table, but it wasn't the one with the setbacks and stuff. So pulling that up doesn't mean anything to me, I want you to tell me, is that really what's on the internet site? Because I scrolled through all the sections, and there's no SFZ. So I can't even find a description, which I'd appreciate it if y'all would, like, show me what it says about what SFZ is supposed to do, because I didn't even have the opportunity to reply back to saying.
If you look at the tables for garden homes, there's a ton of stipulations, but if you switch over to FSZ, there's no stipulation. So are you switching the zoning to get out of the garden home stipulation? If that's what you're doing, that's not okay with any of us.
I think FSZ was an old zoning...
Garden home stipulation.
Oh, man, there's like 10 paragraphs on it.
And it was sold to us by Frank as garden homes.
They're right across the street from me. Only that the guy who owned this property before tried the same thing. I mean, identity.
We, the neighborhood knows about the difficulties with that lot, totally understands it. It's, it's a difficult change of the bus stop.
Why, none of us bought it.
But we also remember when it had those, those houses on those lots you're trying to fill in, and rental is not pleasant. And I own rental property, I would love to say I can get this perfect people renting, it doesn't have to, their renters, it's not their home, they don't care. So it just doesn't, it means nothing to me when you say, I'm gonna make sure I get your people. I've tried to, it doesn't always go that way. So to me, that's just...
I have, I have good tenants, I have good tenants.
I think I have good tenants, too, but, you know, it just doesn't always go that way. To me, that's just, that's just stuff that has no meaning to the fact that...
And there's, and there's homeowners that don't take care of their own house.
You know why they're doing this, right? It's because they said we can look at the houses around it.
I take care of my house. My point is, is it's extraneous, and it's not really pertinent to the fact we're talking about putting high-density living in a scattered neighborhood that's not high-density.
Well, the problem is, in two years, when you're tired of dealing with that, you sell it to the next landlord who doesn't care. Would we stop...
Yeah, then we're all still stuck with your...
I mean, it's not personal whatsoever in our backyard. And we would love homes to be built there. So I would love it, but five feet, uh-uh, no, because they're wrecked houses, they're not owner occupied.
Okay, there's a distance between five feet from each other.
Well, remember that on the city thing, I can't find anything on what SFZ is, I can find garden homes, and I can find, and I don't know what the city gave you of what FSZ is, I can't find SFZ online. But I would love if you built a 1200 square foot house.
There's more than my big...
And to take, understand, I didn't get to see this either, so my complaint to the city is that I didn't know about any of this until last week. So the notification that I'm supposed to get as a citizen, I didn't get that. So I didn't get to look at this, I have no idea what's going on. I know what it looked like before, and I know the problems we have, or is that high-density? So I can see from experience of that high-density on that lot.
Now, does it have to go one of the middle kind of...
And can city, can city council member tell me that they got my package? Okay, because I only got Robert Jasko's the only one that replied back to me. Yes, yes, that's, yeah, yes. There's three, which matches what he says, there's three in the hall there already. And what you aren't seeing is the warehouse, which is on...
Yeah.
And regardless of the notice question to the city council, is that it's a very high-density for that neighborhood. It changes our dynamic from single-family, home-owned, whatever you call it, where you live in your own house, owner occupied, to rented.
And it does.
And it switches, it totally flips it. If you look in there and...
And that's what you're supposed to see on what I provided you, was that if you start to see that section of the neighborhood go to a predominance of rental properties, you're very much starting to cause a problem and a rot in the whole neighborhood, because it's, it's mixed now, okay? You can't sit there and go, well, you have a little 800 square foot house there. Yes, we do, but we're a mixed neighborhood, it's okay. But if we go to...
I don't think, we're not gonna be able to take action on this tonight, because, because notice is a question, that's a valid question.
It's still a valid question.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to see any action. And so, I would entertain a motion to continue this item after we find out whether we've given proper notice.
It gets sent back to P and Z.
We should table this until we have proper...
We wish.
To continue.
Should you send back, should you send back?
Yeah, I'd like to see it go back to P and Z, because I'm not sure how it ever got out of P and Z. I mean, this neighborhood, how they decided to bring in FSZ, is there a...
Hey, this is a public hearing, by the way, are you allowed to motion at your public hearing?
Legally, ask the lawyer what we do legally.
That's correct, I'm sorry, you're correct.
I'm allowed to speak at a public hearing, yes.
Ask the lawyer what we should, what they have to do legally. Don't they have to send it back to P and Z?
I think this is just discussion.
This is a, this is a public hearing. At this point, we're in a public hearing. And so, the question of whether or not it was actually properly noticed, whether it was actually published in the newspaper, it was sent to the newspaper. So whether it was published in the newspaper is something that we can't answer tonight at, you know, 7:20. So we're going to, the council at this point needs to go ahead and make a motion to continue the public hearing, so that we can do the homework and research and see and make sure everything is done properly. So appropriate action will be taken as soon as we answer all the questions that we need to answer.
And I have a motion to continue.
I'll make a motion to continue.
Do it, is there a second?
I've got a question when you bring that up for discussion, is why would it be tabled? Why would it not be sent back to P and Z? Because they didn't do notice either.
We have, we have to see what's happened with this notice.
Yeah, but your motion is, I want to table it, it should be a motion to send back.
Just to continue the public hearing, I've changed the motion, just to continue.
All right, and then, did I have, did I get a second?
Can I speak?
I have a second. No, sir, I'm sorry, I have a second, all in favor? All right, it is unanimous, so we're gonna continue this for later. We're gonna see where we are with this notice, and if it needs to be, to then, we'll do what we have to do, make sure...
But you did get all these people here, which I'm glad we're, we're gonna at least have you recognized, we didn't get the notice. But you have all these people here, and now you're telling us it's a public hearing, and we also can't talk to you while we're here, so we're gonna come back again.
Well, I think y'all listened to George's question, I mean, you listen to questions right now. Well, we've already tabled it, right?
No, it's not tabled, the meeting's just getting...
Okay, continue.
When I first came in here, I asked someone if I needed to sign up out here to speak, and they said, no, you don't have to.
Correct.
And so I would like to speak.
Yes.
All right, do we want to continue with this?
Well, at this point, the motion... At this point, Mayor, the motion to continue the public hearing has been passed, so the public hearing is continued, unless you want to have a motion for reconsideration and reopen the public hearing to keep going. But that's the only other option that you have.
Are we making a motion to close the public hearing?
We're making a motion to continue the public hearing, which is not closed, it may be reopened, and if it's determined...
It may be reopened, and if it's determined that notice was properly published in the newspaper, because that seems to be the only question from what I'm hearing.
Not knowing what SFZ was.
Then we will, then we will continue with this hearing. If not, we will see what we need to do, and what we need to do is to do the process properly. I think that individuals, the question is that the individuals that came would like to express their concerns in full, that they, the public notice was just one piece of that. So what I'm understanding is they want to know if they can continue to talk about what their concerns are. We cannot continue to have a public hearing if we did not properly notice for that public hearing. Okay, there we go. Thank you.
No, I feel like I'm BSing everyone.
Sorry, they made a mistake and now we can't talk about it.
They didn't notify us of the public hearing.
No, we think they notified us of this public hearing.
It was in the paper. We can't continue it, so we're gonna have to look in the paper, because that's where we can't follow the logic of what's going on.
Well, no, it's going to continue at some point, but maybe not today.
Well, I would say...
You gotta notify people.
Okay.
But Larry, they noticed this for this public hearing, they just couldn't do it for the P and Z meeting. That was, that was the tension.
No, we didn't get notice for this one either. It was only on the agenda.
Can I ask though, that somebody could at least verify to me, since I'm kind of the one that's keeping everybody up on this, can somebody tell me that SFZ is online? Because that's my resource.
That's, that's what she was showing you, ma'am.
That table is online?
That's exactly what she was showing you. Yes, ma'am. And there's...
Can you click through it, Jennifer?
Designations, designated SFZ areas in Van Alstine?
Can you click through it, Jennifer, so she can see how to find it, please?
Department of City, I think, and using ordinances. What is she, yeah.
I don't know, you can't read it.
Can anybody read that one?
Ah, it's pretty small. Index 1A, residential regulations.
Index 1A.
Oh, it's not even the zoning ordinances.
Yeah, it is.
Well, the zoning ordinances there, it says, directs you to 1A for the setbacks.
It's a separate link. So I went to the whole service you've got that has all the ordinances out there. This is a separate schedule for planning a zone.
Frank, are there other SFZ designations within Van Alstine?
No, sir, that's it.
That's what I thought. This is the first time it's been used, correct?
No, we've had it...
Is that correct?
No, I thought we had it up there on Main Street, right there where the lumberyard is, isn't that SFZ?
So the same guy got SFZ located on two areas? Are you kidding me?
No, it's a different, it's a different developer.
Well, maybe, but it's the same, it's the same property owner who sold his and then sold it.
Oh, you're talking about the property owner who owns the lumberyard?
Yeah.
That's probably correct.
What kind, what kind of crap was he selling that day?
Well, I mean, all right, so you invented an SFZ, see if this guy can get rid of his property, is that right?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This is just turning into a, I'm gonna move on to the next item. We are gonna have to have another, a public hearing on this, and it's continued for now. Item number seven, conduct a public hearing regarding various zoning text amendments, which includes, but is not limited to, amending the city's codes, uh, city's code of ordinances, chapter 46 zoning, article one, in general, section 46 dash two definitions, to add or to revise certain terms of amending article two district regulations, including amendments to section 46 dash 26 zoning districts, and any necessary amendments to section 46 dash, or dot 22 zoning district map, amending section 46 dash 40 M1 manufacturing industrial district light and section 46, you know, light and, and section 46 dash 41 M2 manufacturing industrial district heavy, amending article three, specific, special and non-conforming uses, section 46 dash 66, use of land and buildings to amend use tables for residential uses, office, retail, commercial and service uses, and manufacturing, storing and warehousing uses, and affecting uses, including but not limited to bed and breakfast, hotel, motel, 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 hotel, motel, motor lodge, oh, motor hotel, motor lodge, residence hotel, pawn shops, credit access businesses, and retail e-cigarette stores and other impacted uses. And this is moving definitions.
Was this all decided at the last planning and zoning meeting as well? Because it's so weird to get numbers that easy.
No, this was not.
Yeah, okay.
What's, what's the driver behind this, guys? Anybody give me an overview of what, why to change it?
It's just moving things around a bit. I believe it's just to make things easier to find.
Actually, you're trying to make things easier, to pull out of an appendix and put it into the zoning ordinance so that it was easier to find. That's, that's why the definitions have been made. So we are working on trying to get it where it is more user-friendly.
Yeah, so basically, you're just cleaning up your, your table content.
Yes.
That's what it looks like, okay?
So, so what's in there, all those, those words, for someplace else, you just moved them forward?
Yes, and that's part of the appendix. We're trying to pull the appendix into the codes, but we don't have to go to two places.
Okay, good.
Any other comments on that? Moving, just moving a bunch of definitions, so it's, what, adding, adding appendices into the definitions table?
We moved, we moved definitions up to the front of the ordinance from the appendix. And what we also did was, there were a couple of new uses that the P and Z looked at, that credit access business, which you're seeing the beginning of, of your packet, a copy of a proposed ordinance, it's gonna be in front of you on another day. It was just put in there to let you know what that was gonna look like. Credit access business or payday lenders was one, our retail e-cigarettes was another one that was going to, going to be addressed. So the P and Z also looked at what zoning districts those could be appropriate in, and we would see one, or C2, excuse me, they decided those were going to be allowed with an SUP. The other revisions to the ordinance really had to do with trying to make it more user-friendly and get those things out of the appendices up to the front, and also to change the mis-designation that the codifier made when he labeled our manufacturing industrial district with a long little hesitation. So that was what we tried, that things was, a codifier's renamed one of our zoning districts, or redesignating it, and trying to move things around in the tables where they belonged, and to move those definitions up to make it more user-friendly.
Thank you.
Can I ask, with, you know, that kind of stuff, that one was published, by the way, that was published 30 days ago about that hearing, which really threw me off, but can, do, is there any precedence that other places actually will take all that legalese junk? And you're allowed to put a little synopsis along in, that goes into the paper, that tells us what in the world this thing is about? I can't think of the right words I'm looking for, where you provide the synopsis that you just provided would have been so helpful. Well, because you read this junk and everybody's like going, you know.
I, I understand. I mean, I don't think you want to pay for the publication to also have that, because the publications, the city has to pay for to put what's required.
Oh, no, I would pay for it.
I mean, maybe there could be something online, maybe that y'all could do, that, that would be more of a synopsis. Or if you looked at the minutes, I mean, I think there was a, a report up here, there was a report at the beginning of this, I don't know if it had some explanation to it, so, I mean, that explains what, what...
No, honestly, I, I would love for a, hey, for a synopsis, because this is how we stay informed of what's going on. And you put this stuff in the paper, and we're like, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, they're doing their job." It's meaningless. So, you know, and we get told all the time, "Well, you didn't show up and you didn't participate," and it's like, "Well, that was a snooze, sir. I have no idea why you, why this is coming about." So if you really wanted me to be informed, it sure would have been nice if we could just pay and have the synopsis put in there. And then I take the spanking when you told me, "Wait, we put it in there, we made it easier, and you didn't come." That would be fine. But that, I'm like, what in the world is that about? So I would love for the city to pay.
You had a hard, you had a hard time reading it.
Well, actually, it's...
Well, I look at that and I see e-cigarette sales. I mean, how come you didn't put tattoo partners in there?
They're probably already covered, George.
Really?
I, I just think it would be really helpful if the city took the extra lines and put a synopsis on this stuff. I mean, thank goodness you actually all started to put the commonly known as addresses. Because when we list, we used to put lots, something, something, you're basically telling me, "Good luck, you better come down to the city and ask us what that's about, because we have no idea." So I know you made those changes, which are just wonderful. For this kind of junk, can't you just put a synopsis? Hey, I know it doesn't cost that much more to have the leaders up there and provide an extra synopsis, so that we can understand what in the world you're doing and why, because it would have been beneficial to you two, because honestly, yeah, us really lazy people go, "Ooh, pawn shops, e-cigarette, my God, we're coming down there, what are they doing?" So it would spare you a lot of time. It's like poor George, man. So a suggestion on that one, I appreciate the synopsis, that's all I wanted to know, because I didn't want it to storm.
Okay. Any, any other comments here, questions about that? All right, so we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Now, there were three items on the consent agenda. One is going to come off because of the, 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 and the second item is, is this one, and I'm gonna read it for the record, just like it was, or just like it is. Consider and take action necessary regarding various zoning text amendments, which include, but is not limited to, amending the city's code of ordinances, chapter 46 zoning, article one, in general, section 42 dash two definitions, to add or to revise certain terms, amending article two district regulations, including amendments to section 46 dash 26 zoning districts, and any necessary amendments to section 46 dash 27 zoning district maps, or zoning district map, amending section 46 dash 41 M1 manufacturing industrial district light and section 46 dash 41 M2 manufacturing industrial district heavy, amending article three, specific, special and non-conforming uses, section 46 dash 66, use of land and buildings to amend use tables for other uses, office, retail, commercial and service uses, and manufacturing, storage and warehousing uses, and affecting the uses, including but not limited to bed and breakfast, hotel, motel, motor hotel, motor lodge, residence hotel, pawn shops, credit access business and retail e-cigarette stores and other impacted uses. So that's article number nine. Now, these can, we've taken our, our item number eight off the consent agenda already, because we're not gonna be able to take any action on that. Any of these others, either of these others, nine or 10 can be taken off the consent agenda. I'm gonna read item number 10 now. Consider and take action on approving change order number two to the Van Alstine water supply expansion project, in parentheses, TWDV project number 62638, any amount of 47,138 hours and 50 cents to C Con Services. All right. So we have, the consent agenda consists of items number nine and 10, unless someone wants to remove one?
Was Frank wanting to address number 10? Do we need to pull that off?
Yeah, you kind of want to tell us what that's for, right, Frank?
Uh, Mayor, Council, on the change order number two, it's within the allotment that we have inside the loan for change orders. Initially, engineering had a projection for what it was willing to take to set up the mixing basin. After having the analysis done, it's gonna take chlorine injection at the well sites as well, and so this change order is supposed to help take care of that. Is there anything to add, Larry?
Now, this, this allows us to get water from the CGMA line in 30 to 60 days, instead of waiting for all the well sites to be, have their disinfection upgraded, which would be about six months out. So this allows a more immediate take of the CGMA line.
What exactly are you doing? You're just getting a bigger chlorine system on the mixing station, or what are you doing?
We're actually gonna burn off the ammonia, we're actually gonna super chlorinate...
Hyperchlorinate.
Hyperchlorinate, yeah, I'm sorry. That's right, get somebody... But they're in hyperchlorinate, the water coming in, to burn off the ammonia, and we'll have a free chlorine system until we finish all the work and all the other wells to put the ammonia systems in.
Yeah, to put warming systems back in.
And then we'll have chloramines when, when it's moved.
Okay.
Any questions or comments about the consent agenda? I would entertain a motion to...
Move to approve.
Okay, approve items nine and 10 on the consent agenda.
Second.
You have a second? All in favor? All right. And Brad, he's voting? So unanimous? All right. So back to the regular agenda, departmental reports.
Thanks, Mayor. Steve, you want to start?
Oh, yes. How y'all doing today? We had two wells give us a little trouble last night due to breakers overheating, as we've been running constantly to maintain the flow of the wells, but thanks for, some of the breakers are getting old, so they're starting to overheat and kick out. Skater failed to call us out, so we called it this morning. I had Skater repaired today. We had two water leaks on Jefferson Street. We got one repaired this morning, and the other one will be repaired tomorrow. We have another water leak showed up on Kelly Lane today. We'll work on that as soon as we get finished with these. At Sewer Plant, we're still in the process of repairing an aerator. And Race Track, we've got another aerator that has an oil leak, so we're gonna try to get it taken care of at the same time. We will be working on Waco Friday, putting asphalt in. We will leave it closed till sometime Saturday to allow the temperature to drop on asphalt so it'll harden up at nighttime. So we will open it back up sometime Saturday or early Sunday morning. That's all for now.
Thanks, Steve. Judy?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. For the statistics for the month of July for the library, we're closing up all our summer programs, thank goodness, and so our attendance has dropped just a little bit from about 2097 to 1980s. There's still very strong attendance. I had 60 new patrons, eight storytimes, and four performers. I'd like to thank the fire department, as well as the police department and public works for helping our, one of our events, Big Red Day, come together, which is always a wonderful way for all the departments to come together in the public to, to interact with, with all of the sets of units. And that's always a wonderful, wonderful day. Let's see, I'd like to especially thank the Grayson Crisis Center for hosting four of our storytimes at the, at the library. They were responsible for continuing the Emerge storytimes with us, which was a, just a very nice storytime and offering. We also had on July 6th, the Texas Alliance for Minorities in Engineering Trailblazer Science Traveling Museum was there, and 93 children and adults came through in the four-hour time period.
Mayor, Council, for a police department report, we had 69 training hours this month, 35 incidents, 688 calls for service. We are also participating in the DWI STEP program, which is a grant that funds officers through the National Highway Transportation Safety and Department of Transportation. That enforcement period's gonna be August 19th through September the 5th, be Labor Day weekend. On the communication side, we had 125 911 calls, 850 calls for service. Total training hours was 69 for communication. And also, they answered 2,270 non-emergency calls, phone calls. Municipal court had 210 cases closed, and one of our court clerks actually passed her Level 2 4 certification, which is a pretty high requirement, not too many people that have that in the state. Also, I'd like to thank all the support we've had this month, just overwhelming support that we've had from the community regarding Back to Blue and first responders.
Chief, what do you do with your friendship?
We had our pre-construction meeting today for Georgetown Village Phase 3, that's the last phase of D.R. Horton, right there where the old mound used to be at the corner of Village Parkway in Kelly. So they're, they're expecting to start in the next two to three weeks, you start seeing dirt move there. Stone Hollow is finishing up their infrastructure, they've got dry. You see electrics in there right now, gas and cable follow. They expect to have houses starting on the ground October 1st, so we got about...
They expect to have houses starting on the ground October one, so we've got about forty-five, sixty days left before they're started. With this change order, we'll, contractor will be in hyperdrive to get finished and make that connection. So the water line, the water line will be in service prior to that station coming online, so we will be circulating water from east and west prior to that. Going forward, we're waiting on a video from Pipe Bursting, that project will be finished up in the next month and ready to go. And you going to handle Palatian?
I'll tell you what, no, go ahead and tell them.
Okay.
Y'all's fine.
Palatian's out there, they're digging their utilities right now, and we're finding extra water lines, sewer lines all over the place, so.
Oh, my god.
Yeah, somehow, somebody, there's two water lines within a foot of each other, six-inch and an eight-inch line had tapped, we tapped the eight-inch line, found out it was a chlorinated water line, now we got to figure out what's six inches. Apparently, even at the open fields, there's a bunch going on. So we're working through all those. The first method is church plans are in, they're going to do an elevator and a storm grain, that coming forward. And then we've got some miter plats coming in for some repairs.
For the month of July, the administrative department received nine requests for public records, two administrative plaques, issued one commercial miscellaneous permit, so it's not new construction, one certificate of occupancy, six residential miscellaneous permits, accepted and entered thirty-three new utility accounts, eleven mailing address changes, four utility account transfers, thirty-three utility account disconnections, and one leak adjustment. We processed sixty-four purchase orders and issued sixty-five general fund checks, thirty-nine water fund checks, three insurance trust fund checks, and one S&amp;N Enterprises fund check.
Mayor Council, I'll give you that big from the Fire Department. Fire Department made a hundred and thirty-seven calls last month, ninety-six for emergency and forty-one for more transports. As far as EMS is concerned, fifty-nine calls were made in Van Alstine, thirteen and Howe, seven in Gunner, five in Tom Bean, twelve in Anna in Collin County, zero in Sherman, and zero in White Rock. Total transports, let's see, non-transports were thirty-five, no patient found, or fifteen, called for a helicopter once, and were referred to another agency six times. I sent everybody a letter, Lieutenant Thompson's moving on to another opportunity, taking, leaving to take advantage of a position with Texas Transplant Alliance, keeping bodies alive so that way they can be harvested for other ones. He wants to stay with his part-time, but he's going to be moving there full-time. As far as City Engineering Board, main thing is, we had the meeting with D.R. Horton today, talking about the fifty-five lots that are going to be developed, reconfirming that the Pavilion and the Sport Court, as well as the hiking trails, will be taken care of before they start pulling permits for the homes. Of course, the Pavilion portion is going to be Stone Hall's burden, and then the Sport Court will be D.R. Horton's. Other than that, majority of the time has been eaten up, evaluating, reevaluating the budget, reconfirming with directors, and meeting with y'all one-on-one to get questions asked and answered, to make sure that we have a comprehensive presentation. And so we've done the one-on-ones, and overview will be next, the PowerPoint, so thank y'all.
Mayor Council closing comments. Brad, do you have anything, any commentary?
I'd just like to thank all the citizens who were there also who showed up tonight to voice your concern. We appreciate all of your feedback.
All right, thank you. Tim, ready?
I'd also like to echo that. I love seeing the public here and involved in the footwork, the governing process, it's wonderful. And I want to congratulate Jennifer on the birth of her new daughter.
I have nothing, Daddy. I have to thank everybody.
Could you tell me when you're going to be, be able to pay the bills online to the city?
All right, we're going to, we're going to have to move on to our executive session.
Mayor, instead of, instead of clearing the room for executive session, you don't have to adjourn, you could recess, we could do the workshop, and then we come back and do the executive session, you can really do it that way.
Oh, all right, well, okay, so.
Just recess, and then the regular council meeting, move into the work session.
All right.
If that's the way council would like to do it. Thanks, sir. Can we move on to the next agenda, sir, on the work session?
Time is seven forty-nine. City Council work session is. All right, and item number two, discussion regarding the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen fiscal year City of Van Alstine General Fund Budget.
Mayor Council, just got a PowerPoint to present. We've gone through the one-on-ones, and going through the general fund budget for this next year. Go ahead, Judy. Just want to show you a breakout of where our general fund revenue comes from. When we talk about, you know, property taxes, where all of our fees, what everything does, we want everything to pay as much of its fair share. You know, we look at, you know, we look at the different departments, who has ability to generate revenue, and who brings what benefit to the community. And so property tax is a portion of it, court fines are as well, and sales and mixed drink tax are another, another important function, and so we want to support our retail and commercial, as well as our mixed drink tax, and of course, we only have a few restaurants in town that are actually providing alcoholic drinks, and so over time, as we grow, we'll see that base grow. As well as EMS fees. EMS fees help to offset a portion of the Fire Department EMS, EMS budget annually. So the main thing is for y'all to see and understand the mix, kind of give you a pie chart. It's not really meant to dumb it down, but try and give you a visual of what you're looking at. And of course, in talking about the top four revenue sources, the property tax, sales, mixed drink tax, court fines, and EMS fees, those four revenue sources constitute over eighty percent of the fiscal year seventeen revenue. Thirty percent of the total general fund revenues comes from property tax. So that's important because we want, we want a portion of the burden to come from property taxes, but we don't want that to be the sole source of revenue, because then that becomes unifocal, and then that's really a make or break issue for the city. Go ahead, Jennifer. And so looking at property tax and other cities around us, I'm sorry, the screen's blocking the cities we compete with. Brad, can you hear me? I didn't even check the screen.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Looking at where we are competitively with property tax, because we're not recommending an increase, we would like to stay at that point six-one. We believe it's competitive. The only city that's, that's actually lower than that is Melissa, and it's by a hair, and they're at exactly point six-one, where we're at point six-one-two. But looking at the added warrant property tax revenue, thirty percent is a function of the tax rate the city formally adopts each year. And so in working with the Grayson County Central Appraisal District, and then establishing the value of each property within the city, and city applying the maintenance and operations portion at points four-seven-four-seven-nine-two of the rate of certified value provided by the Grayson County Appraisal District, the certified taxable assessed value is two-hundred forty-four thousand forty-five, two-hundred, I'm sorry, two-hundred and forty-four million forty-five thousand four hundred and eight dollars, and that represents an increase of six percent over the twenty fifteen taxable assessed value. So that's one of the reasons that we're not looking to raise the tax rate, is values have increased, and that's partly based upon existing properties as well as new properties that have come into the city. So, and to the right is a summary of our twenty fifteen tax year, and the tax rate is our comparison to cities in our proposed twenty sixteen tax rate, which remains unchanged. Does anybody have any, any questions about the graph? Brad, did you get this to look at? I'm sorry.
Yes, I did.
Okay, cool. And I'll send this out to rest of the council, I just chopped Brad right quick because I realized he didn't have it, or asked Jennifer to. Go ahead, Jennifer. Looking at general revenue, general fund revenue summary, have it by department, and what the percentage of change is. And of course, this is the revenue side of it, the expenditure side of it is the other part of the equation. So the twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen proposed budget, it shows the percentage of change. Overall, it's a seven percent increase in revenues from our departments. And when you see that two thousand one hundred and thirty-nine percent increase in police, that's not typically where revenue shows up for the Police Department. That is for a, the majority of that forty-four thousand thirty-seven of it is for a radio grant that Chief Barnes is fairly confident that he's going to get for this next year. Anybody have any questions about any of that? Okay, go on, next, Jennifer. Thank you. General fund budget, general fund expenses, of course, general fund accounts for the expenditures associated with operating the general government services, everybody typically expects year to year. And so we talked about the part that's funded with property taxes and the other fees associated with it, as well as the departments raising revenue on their own. And so the planning into this, and the support for these services, comes from support from City Council for, in the one-on-ones and us discussing really, what do we want to achieve year to year, and what types of services do the citizens demand versus what are we able to afford and provide? Any questions? All right, go on. So if we look at expenses, go ahead and give you the same pie chart and the split out as far as where, where the money goes. Of course, it's, I know these are smaller, but admin constitutes the bluish part, library being this large part right here, this is where we'll put in the library. That's actually public safety, so that's police and police, fire, and EMS, which is, which is typical. Now, library is the lighter orange, so probably should have used a little bit better coloring, but I didn't. On the screen, it was more vibrant, so you could actually see. Museum is just a sliver, which you can't even really see. Parks is a lighter, the purple portion. Senior Center, you really can't even see that sliver, then the Community Center, as well as Streets, and so Streets is going to constitute the larger piece of the pie, because we're putting warrants on Streets year after year. Anybody have any, any questions about?
So public safety is the big gray area?
Yes, ma'am. So we combine police, police, courts, communications, fire, and EMS is all in that larger piece of the pie, so that's why it takes that whole chunk. And of course, this year versus last year, it's a seven percent increase in expenditures, and so, and it's attributed, it's attributed to increased utility, property liability, insurance costs, adjustment for wages based on performance evaluations, equipment replacement, and street improvements, and other special projects that we talked about. And of course, the changes are detailed in the departmental summaries that follow. Everybody good? All right, go ahead, Jennifer. Capital expenses and improvements on the, on the general fund side, because we're trying to keep the property tax flat, we're not trying to do anything crazy, we're trying to maintain operations. We're looking at replacing one ambulance, the current ambulance that's the backup is a two thousand and seven, so it'll be ten years old next year, and we kept it limping along, so we would hope to possibly get a replacement unit by the, by the first of the next calendar year if possible. Replace one police patrol unit, we have one that's outside of warranty and needs to be replaced, and that's due to the use that our officers get on, get on their active patrols and speed, speed enforcement up on the highway. Constructing the shared use path, so that's exciting, that's a TxDOT grant, and our portion, as well as CDC and EDC participating in a large part, helped to offset that, but we're constructing the shared use path, and the beginning will be us paying for the engineering and the surveying on the front end starting this year before we finish up. And then also continuing street repairs and replacement, we're putting two-hundred and sixty thousand towards that. Go ahead. Overall, general fund budget, general fund expense summary, as far as expenses are concerned, administration's down three percent, library's down six, the museum's down twenty-three percent, fire and EMS is two, police went up eight percent, and that was a modification. However, the revenue has gone up as well to offset that, that increase in expenditures. Communications is down fourteen percent, municipal court is up fifty-three percent, and that was some reorganization within those two departments. Parks is up one hundred and thirty-one percent, and that's the hiking bike trail, it's directly attributed to that two-ten. Community Center's down two percent because they're bringing, there's actually more people using and utilizing the Community Center. Senior Center's down one percent, and Streets is down six percent, and that's attributed to, we made the final payment on the pothole truck this year, and so that's where the decrease comes from in the Street Department. Overall, expenses are up seven percent. Everybody good? All right, go ahead, Judy. So I'm looking at general fund summary, revenues versus expenditures, compare and contrast expenditures versus revenues in each department, and of course, if you look at the bottom line, we're bringing you a balanced budget for this next year in the general fund. Anybody have any questions? And that is it. Anybody, everybody good? No questions?
Just make a comment.
Okay, if there aren't any questions.
Yeah.
Just, just when the, if the general public looks at that and they see a seven percent increase, part of what they were talking about as far as helping them understand, the actual expenses are being decreased, they are inflated by the two grant incomes that are coming in there. So if you net those two out of income and expense, you're net, you have a net decrease.
administration's down 3%, library's down 6%, the museum's down 23%, fire and EMS is 2%, police went up 8%, and that was, that was a modification. However, the expenditure, the revenue has gone up as well to offset that, that increase in expenditures. Communications is down 14%, Municipal Court is up 53%, and that was some, some reorganization within those two departments. Parks is up 131%, and that's the hiking bike trail, it's directly attributed to that 210. Community Center's down 2% because they're, they're bringing, there's actually more people using and utilizing the Community Center. Senior Center's down 1%, and Streets is down 6%, and that's attributed to, we made the final payment on the pot hole truck this year, and so that's where the decrease comes from, the Street Department. Overall, expenses are up 7%. Everybody good? All right, go ahead, Jennifer. So I'm looking at general fund summary, revenues versus expenditures, compare and contrast expenditures versus revenues in each department, and of course, if you look at the bottom line, we're bringing you a balanced budget for this next year in the general fund. Anybody have any questions? And that is it. Everybody, everybody good? No questions?
Just make a comment to the.
Okay, if there aren't any questions. I'm kidding.
Just, just when the, if the general public looks at that, and they see a 7% increase, part of what they were talking about, as far as helping them understand, the actual expenses are being decreased, they are inflated by the two grant incomes that are coming in there.
Yes, sir.
So if you net those two out of income and expense, you're net, you have a net decrease in expenditures.
Yes, sir. It's good, grants are wonderful, and we're in a better soon, so. It's all, it's exciting, and the hiking bike trail will, will be outstanding, the communication with radios, definitely helped to keep our, continue to keep our officers safe. Great comment, I'm, I'm glad you said that. Does anybody, Brad, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay. That's it, sir, we can move on to the next, next item if you're ready.
I need four discussion regarding closed 2016 tax rate, and set public hearing dates, and take a record vote.
Okay, so, yeah, so it's just discussion, sir, Jennifer, make sure you confirm for what you think. So, yeah, just establishing the date to take the record vote. Did you have those dates? Can you put them up? And previously, I've sent out the budget calendar motion, just the main thing is making sure that y'all are available to meet and have the hearings and, and for us to keep moving forward. There you go. Okay.
So the, this, the public hearing meetings that we have planned are Tuesday, August 30th, and Tuesday, September 6th.
Is everybody still good with those dates?
Number eight is that?
No, that's, that's the old, that's the old one, so, yes, sir, so today is, that's the old calendar, remember I modified it, and then Jennifer's been out on maternity leave, so I don't know if I sent her the corrected date for today.
Do those dates work for you, Brad?
Yes, they do.
So the meet to take, the, the date to meet and take action would be the, wouldn't it be Tuesday, September 13th, is when they would announce it?
No.
When, when do you need?
I need to schedule a meeting to take the record vote on the tax rate, so that we can do the, have the public hearings, and set the public hearings.
Okay.
So preferably before next Wednesday.
Before next Wednesday? Okay.
Which can even be at City Hall.
Man, we've done that in the past at City Hall. Is everybody okay with having a, a quick meeting to establish?
On what day?
Can you tell me, how's everybody, is everybody available, when is everybody available for next Wednesday? Y'all want to do something next Tuesday, y'all want to do something Thursday or Friday evening? We can do it right at 5 o'clock, we can do it whenever y'all are available.
Thursday, I have a parks board meeting next Thursday.
Next Thursday?
This Thursday or next Thursday?
We need, we need to do it before next Wednesday, Brad, so.
Before next Wednesday? No, I'm out of town all this week, so I mean.
And I can, I can, you can, if you can Skype in, I can actually, we can do it.
How many do we have to have at a meeting?
Need to have four.
Four, okay.
Just because it's a special meeting.
I mean, I could do, I can do Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, any, any of those prior to Wednesday.
Whatever, whatever's good for council, just please before next Tuesday, and whatever time works for y'all, could be a very quick meeting.
First Friday, Monday, or Tuesday?
Friday, okay, 5?
Five, I know, everybody?
Tim Ernie, you know good? No good for Tim?
But if all four of them can meet, do it.
Is it good for you, Robert, Russell?
I'll, I'll still be stocking in, though, on that, because I'm going to be on the road on the way back, so, but we'll be at a hotel by then, I could Skype in.
Did you say Friday would not work for you, Tim?
It doesn't.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, Jennifer, tell me that Friday won't work, because we've got to do 72 hours, minutes.
So Monday or Tuesday?
Monday.
Either day works for me.
Can we do Monday at 5? Is everybody okay on Monday at 5?
Yes, works great.
Okay, sorry. She's trying to pop on my deaf ear, and it's not working.
Yes.
Okay, so Monday, we're good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
At City Hall?
Yes, sir, we can do it right there inside City Hall. Okay, so you can adjourn, is that, you can adjourn?
Is that a special call meeting?
Yes, sir. Uh, yes, there'll be a special call meeting.
Since we didn't review and approve the minutes, do you want to go ahead and do that as part of it?
Sure.
I mean, or do we, or do you want to just do that at the next?
No, we can, we can review and approve minutes.
Okay. That'd be great. It wasn't in the consent agenda.
Yeah, when, it's.
Jennifer's been on the train.
With, with budget, and with Jennifer, and with staff and everything, no, that's, we're good with Monday. Okay, we can do that, so thank you for asking. Okay, so, yes, sir, so if everybody's good, Mayor, you can adjourn this, and then we can go to the executive session, we can, I guess that officer recesses. Re-convene, we can reconvene the regular meeting, and do the executive session.
All right, so we, uh, we're going to vote on the, we just adjourn and go ahead and recess. This time is 8:09. All right, and, so we're going to.
You'll take five minutes, sir, and then reconvene?
We'll convene the, the.
The regular, regular City Council adjourn?
All right, at, at 7:15, or 8:15.